353 long-term suspension, 365 day suspension and expulsion to the last policy committee meeting, and I believe there was some conversation really about the information that has been added by our school board attorneys. Provide more specificity around students having access to alternative education when they're long-term suspended, and under which circumstances this may not be provided. So Eva and I actually met and talked through that and made some additional revisions as you see marked in blue, and she's here with us and we can take any questions that she may have.
And so my understanding of the, you know, so what's in here? What it said was that it was superintendent's discretion, which is not accurate, and so we replaced that with, you know, the guidance in the law about when you could deny someone alternative education. The question was, should Chapel Hill have a policy that is more, either more narrow as far as when you could deny alternative education? So that's obviously the policy committee's right place. Barb, do you want to sort of, based on the language I have now?
Sure. That's a, that's a, that's a fair characterization of what I said last time. And I mean, I had a couple other kind of other wording things. I mean, but I don't know if it, if I should, like, I just think for one, I think we need to change all the references to code of conduct. To call it whatever we call it, the code of community.
Yeah, to be consistent. I think we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. What makes sense?
Um, and I mean, I can talk about the stuff that's in blue and sort of my issues with it. I mean, I've, you know, Eva unsurprisingly, have not liked this case for a really long time. And I just think, I think the, the reasons why you can deny somebody alternative education as listed here are so broad and subjective that it would really, and I don't, I don't think this administration would do this. But assuming we're writing these policies for the future, which I think we are, I feel like these exceptions are so broad that you could, really anybody who got long-term suspended could be denied the provision of alternative education. And so to me, they, they need to be more narrow. And I, and I am thinking that most of the discipline stuff gets handled through the disciplinary transfer process and not through long-term suspension anyway. But yeah, I mean, I had some specific suggested language that I thought.
Yeah, I mean, I think let's, let's look at that. I mean, again, it's, it's up to the board. I don't, you certainly can make it more narrow.
Yeah. So what I thought, I mean, it seems like what we're really concerned about is, is violence, right? And that, that somebody is so, like cannot be safely in a school. And so what I thought would be better would be to just say, the student has exhibited a pattern of violent behavior to students or staff, and the student has shown a pattern of substantial disruption to the learning process. And then the student failed to comply with reasonable conditions for admittance into an alternative education program and leave it at that. But I think that unless I'm missing something, I feel like that encompasses what we'll be worried about. And it occurred to me after I was thinking about this after the last meeting, that it seems even more important to narrow these circumstances, given that, right, since the VLA is gone, kids who might, aren't I right that some kids who would be suspended in the past were put into VLA?
And so some were put on virtual, but I think they do virtual, they're enrolled in Phoenix.
Okay, okay. Then just disregard that, then I misunderstood that.
Phoenix is our only alternative learning program. VLA was just a separate school in and of itself. Because they shared teachers for Phoenix Academy as well as VLA, we have an extenuating circumstances, had a situation where students are assigned to Phoenix Academy, but because they're sharing teachers of which Phoenix students may be taking a class that's awfully virtually taught, the students were able to access those teachers through those virtual classes, if that makes sense.
And I know Dr. Banks, that we do have like one or two maybe students who are at Phoenix who are virtual because of safety concerns, but is it your understanding that that will continue to be possible even after the VLA closes? That someone might be virtual for their alternative education if there's a safety issue?
That could certainly be a possibility, but that would, of course, with us closing VLA, it would not be the VLA teachers, but perhaps if we have teachers who are teaching through Apex Learning and so forth, yeah.
I guess it will depend on age and what classes.
Correct.
But it doesn't, like, it would still be unavailable.
Some virtual option.
Yes.
To some extent, yeah. So I think the request on the table is to clarify that it's not like one incident of violent behavior that would lead to us denying, but a pattern. And the same with disruption. And I think when it comes to number five and six, I don't, you know, I, it's my understanding that this really has not come into play yet, but I, I do think it can, and that five and six are, I'm saying, I'm not sorry, six, but five. And I've seen it come into play is if you have a student who is either of an age or who needs classes that are not offered in, through the alternative setting. And that is when I have seen not available a lot. It's obviously rare, and I've not seen it happen in Chapel Hill, but. And of course, you don't know how our resources may be limited with future.
Right. So that seems important to leave five in just for that kitty's.
Um, but if there is interest, so I'm gonna put, if you have the Google Doc open.
I do. And if you're adding Eva from the board policy committee, that's in green.
Okay. So I'm just doing suggesting right now, so you can see what I'm doing.
Dad.
This is that.
Noah, Noah. Sorry.
Trying to think of what level of evidence we would want of that.
I think I would suggest it has exhibited, because, well, that doesn't make sense.
That makes sense.
I don't really know what, how you pose a threat to someone. That seems completely subjective.
The only, the examples I can think of is rival gang involvement, or the victim is also at the alternative school of whatever incident happened.
Right.
Okay. I don't know, Dr. Banks, if that.
Yeah, the only other situation I would think about is if we have teachers who are present at, presently teaching at the Alternative Learning Academy, but may have actually had contact with the students in another setting. And so that may pose an issue of concern now that that student is currently at Phoenix. But that would also be a very unique situation.
This is a, I mean, wouldn't, if you said, if we said the student has exhibited violent behavior to students or staff, a pattern or whatever, wouldn't that encompass the rival? I mean, I guess it doesn't encompass the fact of being in rival gangs, but it would encompass, I would think, the thing about the.
So what I've suggested here is that their presence poses a current threat based on a general.
Okay, that makes, I like that.
Can we back up a step? I'm not sure if this is true for other people. I'm looking at the doc and I can see Eva's cursor bouncing around, but I can't see any of the suggestions that you're making.
Yeah, that is.
I was just about to say that.
Right. So, yeah, so I'm not sure if it's because of our, you know, limited access to it or what, but so that means that the public.
I can share. I can share my screen.
Okay, yeah, maybe we'll do that, because we need to make sure that if somebody's watching this later, they can see what we're discussing and choosing.
And as a reminder, it'll, you know, of course, be before the public for.
Right, right, but it'd be nice to, to be transparent about what we're discussing tonight as well.
Is that showing?
Yes, yes.
I, I wonder if we're not narrowing this too much though, because I could think of a scenario, like I don't know what objective evidence means, but like I can imagine a scenario where a student has threatened another student, and maybe there's been violence between them in their home neighborhoods, for example, that makes another student fear. And so I wonder if it's just, we ended at the student's presence poses a current threat to staff or other students. I don't know how you'd get objective evidence.
Oh, I think even just a student saying it. I guess what I'm trying to avoid is like someone's, you know, incorrect and biased perception of the threat that a student poses.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. So maybe, yeah, like that, Eva.
Ronnie's point that maybe that's too lawyer-y, so how about?
Yeah.
I can't see where you're going with that.
If a student comes in and says, he threatened me, particularly if they have a tax, that's evidence.
Can I, can I also clarify and question this? Number one, the student has exhibited a pattern of violent behavior. Do you, do you really have to have a pattern of violent behavior to be? I was gonna go back to that one too, Brandy. I don't think. Can I, sorry, Brandy, go ahead and finish your thought, and then I have another one. No, no, I just, I don't, I think that there are some things that are egregious enough that. So I was gonna say, or they have demonstrated, whatever the right word is, some egregious or substantial violence, you know, it could be a one-time thing, but it could be material enough that we would want to not wait for a pattern.
Would, would that not be covered by number two? I'm not, I'm, I think it would, but maybe I'm missing something.
It could be, but then maybe number one. I don't see the need for the pattern word. I mean, it's up to you all, but I agree that you say number two, but it makes number two questionable, or it makes, it's enough to make me question number one.
That it would have to happen more than one time, is what you would speculate with pattern.
So do we need number one? Up to you guys.
I feel like two covers it.
Yeah, I do too.
I think now that we've rewritten two, I don't, I feel like that covers what number one is trying to get at.
Um, if, if I would say for number two, where we have the language of presence in the alternative learning environment, I don't know that that might cover violent behavior period before it happens at the alternative learning environment. And then I also think about that in some cases, we may have homebound teachers who are providing alternative learning services. And so I think we might want to have something that's the violent behavior, and that's just a suggestion.
So you would suggest keeping number one also, Dr. Charlies, Dr. Banks, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
And do people feel, I think what I had thought was that the violent behavior, the pattern should be towards staff or students. Like if you have a, a child who's got issues in the home, to me, that shouldn't be a reason to keep them out of school.
When I said the homebound piece, I was speaking specifically around our staff where we have homebound teachers. And these are folks that may not necessarily be the traditional teacher for that student, but these are folks who've taken up part-time employment, but they're our staff, and they would be going into the home with a student who might have potentially violent behavior that we, you know, that may not be in our best interest, that we want to send staff to interact with the student, if that makes sense. If there's a situation where the student has exhibited violent behavior in the past, that may be an extenuating circumstance.
And I can say, while this is rare, you know, some of the specific cases that we have dealt with where, including in Chapel Hill, is students who are facing murder charges for something that's happened outside of school. And so that is an example where they were not placed at Phoenix. Just due to the seriousness, even though it was outside of school.
Right. And so that would be covered by two, right? I mean.
I think I go back to this whole thing about the alternative learning environment, and I don't know if we would also include homebound services as a part of the learning environment or not.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I thought you were, okay.
I would, but if that's not clear to you, then it might not be clear to other staff. I mean, we can just say presence. Or the student's participation.
What about the student's placement in alternative learning?
I guess I was actually trying to say, I see reason for keeping number one about violent behavior.
Because, because what you're saying is like, if someone has been violent to their siblings or parents, then we might not want to send someone to give educational services to them in their home.
And I like Mike's edit to say in number two, there's evidence that the student's placement in the alternative learning environment, rather than presence.
All, all the variations of being in alternative learning, and that could include homebound services. Okay.
Okay.
Are we, are we okay with keeping the others as is?
Did we decide to get rid of the word pattern in number one?
I'm okay with this thing in either way. I feel like the gist of it is covered by two anyway.
Is that okay, Brandy?
Okay.
Okay, so Barbara, we jumped in to this blue part, but it sounded like you had some other parts about this, like the code of conduct thing, other edits.
Yeah. Um, I do. Okay, so the first is in A1, the second paragraph. And I think we talked about this when we were discussing 4370 last time. I, I just find these policies confusing and how the two interplay. And so what about, like, it says, upon the recommendation of the principal, the superintendent may impose a long-term suspension. So they can, but it's appealable. And I feel like saying impose makes it seem like it's completely discretionary to the superintendent. So I guess I was wondering, wondering if we could say something like, you know, as, like cross-reference the student's right to appeal it in, like, mention 4370, or just replace impose with recommend.
I think impose is the right word, because what we're trying to differentiate is that a principal can impose a short term, but they can't impose a long term. The superintendent can impose a long term. It's subject to appeal, but if not appealed, it's final at the superintendent level, whereas a principal could not do that. I don't have any objection to referencing the hearing procedures in 4370.
Is it cross, can we just make it across? Do you want to put it right there, or can it be a cross-reference at the end?
Or could we say something like, subject to the appeal procedures outlined in 4370? I feel like if you just read 4350, you wouldn't know that you could appeal it. That's what I'm worried about.
During the process, we, and I'll just add this just so that you understand, do legally have to give parents a copy of 4370, and we also have to give them a copy of the document that they can choose to appeal or not appeal. And they have to formally document that they choose not to appeal and return that back to the hearing office.
Okay, so do you think, I mean, it is under number two lists notices that must be provided, including the hearing process?
I mean, and they receive a hard copy of that.
I mean, Mike or Ronnie, what do you guys, I don't, I'm not like going to the amount on this one. There are other parts of it that do reference 4370, so.
Right, they tell them to take a copy of the important things too. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Um, so I also just wanted to query if anybody else felt like the range of expellable offenses seems overly broad in paragraph A3. It feels, it feels inconsistent with what I feel like is the gist of the code of character. Like, for example, student substance abuse also includes just possession of a, of an illegal substance. And I feel like, and I know it's not mandatory, but I just, I don't know, I think we should really reserve expulsion for very egregious offenses.
I do, it is modified here, and we could move this earlier with, you know, a mere violation of those policies would not do it. There has to be evidence of a continuing threat to safety if they remain.
And I think that you will notice that any of our policies, specifically those that have regulations that spell out disciplinary consequences such as three days to 10 days to long-term, the code is aligned with those. So thinking about policy 4325, the code is aligned and references that policy as with any other policy. If there's a reference specifically from the board policy or in the regulations that we disseminate specific consequences. I will also say that for our code of character conduct and support, that for students who are in elementary school, if the principals are pursuing anything over two days for a suspension, they do have to contact Brandy's office for permission. And for our secondary schools, anything beyond five days. So principals are not able to just move straight into making a recommendation for long-term suspensions or expulsions without a district review, and that is documented in our code.
I think, sorry, I looked at what, is, the stuff that's highlighted in blue, is that how it was before? Because I think I was reading, it is.
Policy numbers are, correct. Those are.
It just, okay. I feel like, I guess I read that part to just apply to 4333 and not all of it.
Yeah, maybe that's what Eva was saying about moving it earlier. That's what I meant. Because I don't feel like it's clear that it applies to all of those.
I mean, I think the commas speak to the reading that it applies to all.
Yeah.
Should there be a serial comma here? This is not my forte.
I actually don't think.
That's one that could go either way, because, I mean, it's.
With teachers.
Mike is using my backup on grammar, but I don't think.
Yeah, I know, right? Um, yeah. Yeah, and Ronnie, although I agree with you that it's written correctly, I read it incorrectly because of how it's written.
Okay.
And I feel like it could be clearer that if we either move that part to the beginning or, or stress it more.
So we could say. I'm just putting this in here for you to see it. Expulsion is reserved for. Sure. How about circumstances?
Yeah.
It's three months, two days, presence in school, and students. And that's really the definition and statute as well.
Yeah. I feel like that clears it up to me.
Yeah.
And then we just have to delete it down below. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and it's, it's also, it's down below on the sentence we're looking at, but it's also in the student's exhibit or sentence in the next one. The same phrase about continued presence in school constitutes clear threat. It's in there again later in the paragraph. So we could delete it there and also delete.
Well, that's a different policy reference.
Oh, I know.
I know we're repeating it three times, but I don't want to give the misimpression that.
Okay, okay.
Do you go up two more? It says if the criteria for expulsion or otherwise. But never mind, I see what it is. Okay, we're fine.
Okay.
Anything else? Yep, yep. Uh, B2, um, the part about determination of appropriate consequences, antisocial behavior? I don't know what that is. Um, and then I also, so that's one thing. I just feel like, I would like to define that a little bit, or, and then my other concern is the including the existence of a criminal record. Because A, criminal record of what? Like just convictions or convictions and arrests? And two, just criminal records are like systemically racist. So I, I mean, those are, but so I guess I have two sort of issues with it.
And I don't think that is something that is, like, the phrase antisocial behavior doesn't come from this stuff.
It doesn't.
Um, I don't believe so. So I don't have any attachment to that phrase. I agree, it's maybe a little outdated, and it could probably say. I mean, it could just say the student's disciplinary record.
Yeah, I would be more with that.
I'm seeing nods. Is that okay?
Yeah.
So are you, and I just want to be clear, because I will say that principals will bring up criminal records. So are we saying that we're taking that out as being something that's going to be considered an extenuating circumstance? So are we saying that we're taking that out as being something that's going to be considered an extenuating circumstance? I don't have an issue with that, but I just want to be very clear.
So what this list is, is.
Looking at the culpability and the dangerousness.
Mitigation or aggravation. Um, and whether i- as far as the level of offense that we are looking at and, um.
Yeah. And I want to be very clear because those are things that are brought up and especially even thinking about the policy around the multidisciplinary team and placing students at the alternative learning school. So if that's not something that should be reviewed and we're taking it intentionally out of the policy, I just want to be very clear about.
It doesn't say to me that the team couldn't review that information.
Okay.
And they'd have to, to determine the factors that we looked at earlier about if the student has engaged in violence, et cetera.
I would say that principals tend to use the policy as a bit of a checklist, though.
Correct. And I was intentionally taking it out.
Yeah. I mean, they refer to policy as they're preparing their information.
And can you give me an example of where they would look at a criminal record and how might, how that might inform the dangerousness?
Which is specifically. I'm sorry, how it would inform the length of suspension. So that's what this section is about. It's just the length of suspension.
So in this two, it's specifically assessing, attempting to assess, assess the dangerousness of the student. And I don't know that a criminal record related to drugs or alcohol might give any, would give any sense of that. Or larceny or all kinds of things. I mean, like, I think if we're going to have it, it should be we should say of convictions and it should be certain things, but I would just leave it out.
Yeah. I guess I wanted to be very clear, especially because we're having this conversation and it's recorded and it's public. And to Brandy's point, um, this policy is often referenced to principals as they're trying to determine a long-term suspension. And criminal record has come up in terms of things that they've looked at. And to me, if we take it out, we're saying that that's not what we want them to look at. But I don't know that we should say, well, they can look at it because if it was already in the policy, but we've intentionally taken it out.
Well, and this is just this, uh, an option. Um, it could reflect this, since, since this is falling under dangerousness, the student's disciplinary record or history of violent acts.
Right.
And so if they get that information from a criminal conviction, then that's fine. But a criminal conviction for like, you know, possession of a beer would probably not be related to dangerousness.
Right.
That would be good. I was just going to appreciate Brandy and, and Dr. Banks for helping us be practical on how this is used. So thank you for continuing to remind us. I, I like that suggestion. Um, how does that sit with you all?
Criminal conviction sits better with, for me, because I think kids can be alleged for many things. And if we just jump off of allegations and the kid is found not to be guilty, then we've made decisions that impact them for a lifetime in their educational experience. So conviction to me sits a lot stronger than just a child who's been charged. That's my professional and personal opinion.
And I think.
And I go back to Barb's point of like a conviction of possession of marijuana, that, that doesn't, I don't know how you make the connection to dangerousness with that. So then you might need to specify. Yeah.
Yeah.
What we said just in a minute ago included the word violence.
Yeah.
Right. So what I was thinking is, and my thought was that those may have been, they may, we may learn about that from criminal convictions. We may learn about it from other sources. Does that go far enough, you think, for Brandy's?
I think it'll be fine as is. I just think what we're going to end up having is a lot of questions that we have to field from people. Whereas if we just had it there, they would know that that could be something that could be used. I can just, I mean, just in work.
What, what would you guys propose if, if you think this is going to be confusing to principals?
I was going to say, I think that, um, board member Fed, Fetters was actually kind of leading us to defining antisocial behavior. Um, that may be something that needs to be considered as we think about the degree of violent acts or criminal convictions. Um, if it's tied specifically to, to violence as opposed to, um, what board member Dossie mentioned in terms of possession of drugs. That's just my thinking, um, of it. I just think that the criminal record to what you all mentioned, if it's that broad, you know, I don't know if it defines dangerousness, but a criminal conviction of, are we talking about murder, kidnapping? Those may be other things that may need to be defined.
What about for violent offenses, violently threatening behavior?
Yeah.
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 I'm good with that.
Okay. Yeah. So then if questions come back to you all from principals, this seems clear that they can look at criminal records, but they should be looking specifically for only these kinds of criminal, criminal convictions.
And I, I would, if I were representing a student in this, I would argue that a juvenile delinquency record should not be included here. This is just criminal. So if we mean juvenile or criminal, then we should say that, like we should say juvenile adjudications or criminal convictions. Um, I mean, I don't, I don't.
I, I think we're not trying to.
Yeah. And, and what I will, what I will say is that oftentimes, um, board member Fetters, they're not looking at a student's criminal record. It is something that may be publicized through newspapers and those types of things that kind of come to our attention and that attention of the community as well.
Okay. So is there a desire to add juvenile adjudications or not? You're not going to have adult convictions really rarely if you're under seventeen, is that right?
Right. What does that, what does the juvenile adjudication mean? I don't know that a layperson is going to understand that. I mean, well, they shouldn't be public first of all, but it, I mean, it's like, it's not a criminal conviction. So like if you're, if you're asked, if you're applying for a job and someone says, were you convicted of a crime? If you were prosecuted in juvenile court, you can say no. So it's like, just, it means you, it's wasn't, you know, you were a child when it happened. So we're not going to consider you culpable in the same way as if you were an adult.
So when, I mean, we were looking at this wording because we're considering principals and their sort of checklist of going through this stuff. So in, in, you know, completing their checklist, are they requesting juvenile records as well as criminal?
They wouldn't get them. So, I mean, those records are not provided to the school. They may find out about something. Um, and if, I believe if there's an adjudication for something that, like a violent felony level offense, the school may be notified by the court counselor, but, um, but like just to have a list, they're not going to buy that generally.
Okay.
Um, and I will say like this again is related to aggravating factors for a suspension. Um, so not whether, you know, there may be other reasons for which we're considering. I'm trying with this like it is, but I. Wait, Ronnie, do you want to move on or do you want to?
Yeah.
I, I thought Barb was in the middle of the sentence. I'm sorry.
Well, now I'm looking at it again and I'm wondering, why are we putting these two things in what, in A? Cause are we meaning student's disciplinary record for violent or threatening offenses or just student's disciplinary record period? If it's just the.
It was their disciplinary record.
Do we, do you think it's too confusing? Do you want to just take it out and then we'll just field the questions? Do we want to just do it that way? Cause I, I mean, I, I think we could get it, you know? I'm fine with it if we want to just answer the questions as they come up for individual principals. And we don't run into it that often, so it would not be that many questions. So if we want to just take it out for clarity, we can.
Wait, what, what's wrong with what we have? Cause I think that you could read it to say the student's. I, do you guys think that's clear that it's just disciplinary record and not disciplinary record related to violent or threatening offenses?
Yeah, cause it says or, so that's clear to me.
Right.
Right. And it's under a heading that's about dangerousness.
Right. That's why to me the connection was unclear before. I think this language clarifies that.
Yeah. Well, I think also if, if this results in a lot of questions from principals, we could still revisit this.
Absolutely. And it will not result in a lot of questions. I want to be careful because we ask once a year, probably.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right.
So I wanted to just clarify, are we okay to take this to, um, the board on the consent agenda for first reading? Okay. So we'll make those changes as noted. Thank you all.
Okay, great.
All right. Thank you so much for raising those questions. Those were really good.
Yeah.
I absolutely agree. I feel like that's what the policy committee is all about. Um, okay. So we're going to look at policy thirty six ten, which is counseling per ring. Dr. Banks again and Terry Smith.
Yeah. So I'm going to let Terry, um, take over with this one. Uh, she's our executive director for hotel services and supports. And so she's got to lead the discussion. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Dr. Banks. Good evening, everyone. I am bringing policy thirty six ten and with the recommendation to add language from the state regarding the peer-to-peer programs for sixth grade and above. So in section C, we have added the verbiage in red to support adding those peer-to-peer programs from our sixth grade and above.
And this comes, I was just going to say this comes from new legislation and Terry, I wanted to ask you. So the legislation says, are encouraged to have them this year and to have them next year?
Mm hmm.
For our year.
So we are, yeah, they're required to have them next year, but this year we do have some peer-to-peer programs. We have some peer buddy programs. And so one of the things that we're doing right now is through the public school demonstration, we have a grant that is supporting those programs. And so we were also thinking about ways to further fund the peer-to-peer programs and the coming years when that grant runs out.
So I don't want to, I don't want you guys to be in violation as soon as this passes. Do you? Uh, which is because you won't have them in place if this passes and like if we put this in policy in March.
I will say that we will probably not have an issue with putting it in place. Terry and Rebecca, our director of counseling have actually designed, uh, learning experiences for schools to be able to stand these programs up. However, we have actually presented this language as optional. I think that what will definitely need to take place is that we revisit this now with the passing of the state statute that it is no longer an option. We can certainly do that in partnership with our school leadership team to let every school know that they need to stand these, um, programs up in their school by, by law.
Well, so one thing you could do is put, beginning with the twenty four, twenty five school year in policy.
Yeah.
Another thing you could do would be to not adopt it until July. But that's a lot to keep track of.
I, I think that I would say effective. So are you saying that we could say with the twenty four, twenty five school year? Is that what you said Eva or effective? Okay.
Because right now the policy language says you will have at all schools. And that is required starting next year.
Yeah. I think we could, I think I would feel more comfortable with effective the twenty four, twenty, um, five school year. And then what we will do is just make sure that we present this information. I think Brandy at, um, one of the upcoming DLT meetings. And then we also kick this off at the beginning of the school year with making sure that we are sharing that again with principals. And then Terry and Rebecca can work with our student support staff in each school to make sure they're following through with, um, the framework that you all have already created.
Absolutely.
And I, um, when you guys bring this, when you all bring this to the full board last year, we, they requested that the clean copy still show the markups.
Yep.
So can you, we'll just, yeah. All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We're good with that. Yeah. All right. Um, moving on, policy forty forty and seventy three ten, staff-student relations.
And Mike, we'll just put that on consent.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. Yes. Put that last thing. Thank you, Ronnie.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hi. All right. So today's, tonight's policy is for the first reading. We're recommending the first reading of policy forty forty, seventy three ten, student and staff relations. And this policy was, is bringing, being brought to the committee so that we can align our policy with the state board of education. And so with this, it is, the purpose of this policy is to ensure that the school district reports employees who have engaged in misconduct with students or who have inflicted physical injury. Um, regardless of the disciplinary infraction, whether that led to dismissal, resignation, we still have to report this to the state board of education. And this is in state statute.
Right.
Yes, this is a new statute and we have been publicizing this because the new law actually provides, um, criminal, potential criminal consequences for someone, for us, for school staff, if they don't report this level of teacher misconduct to the state board. So that is new.
They made it a felony. Yes. Did it go from not being a crime to being a felony?
Uh, I don't remember.
The previous one, I looked at the previous policy. I don't re-mention, I don't remember the mention of what the actual penalty was, but yes, this one is explicit in it being a felony. Um, previously it just stated the suspension and, um, revoking of their administrative license. So now it's that plus the felony.
Thanks.
Okay.
Is there a comma missing after who knows in the, on the last page? Any administrator, including the superintendent, personnel administrator or principal, who knows? Has reason to believe.
I think that, yes, I think there's a comma missing. Yes.
Yes.
I saw that. Yes.
It used to be two things and now it's three things. So.
Out of here. So you see what they're talking about?
Yeah. Okay.
I'll add that in because I'm pretty sure that was in the original. And I will check to be sure.
All right. I don't have any other issues with this one.
No, I don't. I think there's much we can say or do about it.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Very great. Thank you, Dr. Banks. Okay. Policy forty one ten, immunization and health requirements for school entry. Tracy Sanders.
Good evening, everyone. Um, tonight I bring policy four one one zero. Um, immunization and health requirements for school admission. This is a minor change that is required by the state where it removes a reference to the governor's commission on early childhood vision care that no longer exists.
That seems fair.
We're not prohibiting vaccines yet.
Don't bring up all of them there. All right. So I mean, this one seems pretty straightforward. Do we have?
Only in tablet of cardboard.
Yeah.
All right. I don't have any questions on this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
That was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Um, forty two forty, seventy three twelve, child abuse and related threats to child safety.
Good evening, everyone. Um, this policy is going to somewhat sound like what, um, Dr. Harris already presented, but, um, it is something that I do, that we do need to present to you tonight. Um, I'm here to present the proposed changes to forty-two- forty, um, slash seventy-three-twelve. Um, by adding section D, um, the title being duty to report license employees to the State Board of Education. It now reflects that the legal requirements of the new state law statute one-one-five-C dash three-two-six, uh, point twenty. Uh, these changes were, were, uh, made and it came effective December one, twenty-twenty-three. Um, and applied to offenses committed on or after that date. And so that language there is, is required. Um, moving on, uh, and because the proposed changes to, uh, section D, um, is being proposed, it will actually align the order of this policy with the North Carolina State Bor, Boards Association policy, which really actually led us to reorganize the order of our existing policy. Um, so with this modification, it changes the order, but more readable. Um, and so it's being recommended that the subletters that you see in blue reflect, will reflect consistency in the reading order of this policy. Um, and in accordance with general statute one-fifteen-C dash forty-seven-sixty-five, the State of Board Policy, uh, S H L T dash zero-zero-three, that is section H, has added, uh, which addresses the required child abuse and neglect information and resources for grades six through twelve. Um, and it states that, uh, child abuse and neglect information and resources are to be provided at the beginning of the school year and displayed in high-traffic areas throughout the school year in each, um, secondary, uh, school. And that is also required. So what they're asking for is, um, information, a poster that we can put in, um, high-traffic areas that will, uh, present the warning signs, telephone number used for reporting abuse, neglect, uh, information that, that is to be reported and what will be held in strict confidence, um, as permitted by law, available resources, um, including, um, our anonymous safety tip line application. And the last update is, um, the legal references. And so, uh, those are the recommendations.
Okay, great. More members, comments, or questions?
No questions.
I have a very small one. There's a typo on the, the new section H in the title. It says, it should be child abuse and neglect, but it's spelled wrong. Neglect is spelled wrong.
Got it. I see it. Thank you.
That's all that I have. This again seems like something we have little to no control over anyway.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes.
I can't hear anyone. Can't hear us now?
That's really weird.
You can't hear us?
Can you hear me, Barb?
I'm gonna, maybe I'll, I will chat her. Does she pop out? So maybe she can come back in. Okay.
Okay, we'll wait a second.
Maybe a phone number.
I was just thinking how she's coming back on, how much I need like readers when I'm looking at these policies.
That's why I have mine on.
I'm telling you.
My eyes are burning.
Keep that display on a hundred and thirty percent. You're young. You're still young.
That's where we're at right now. That's where we're at.
I had perfect eyesight until I was fifty. So wearing glasses is a new thing for me.
I was very arrogant about it too, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
I, I still don't have them, and I just think people, people are writing stuff too small.
Yeah, right.
It's everybody else's problem. I like it.
No shame in my game.
Barb just texted that she's back on as a panelist.
Did you see that? That's what it said?
She just texted that she's back on as a panelist. I'm just.
Okay.
She won't be able to comment.
No, I want to see some.
I'm trying to get her to go.
No, she said, sorry, she's as an attendee, not.
Yeah, she's an attendee, so I'm, I'm trying to get her to go in through her link in her email.
Right.
Give me just a moment.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. I don't know what happened. Just, I stopped.
Can you hear us now?
Yeah, I'm good.
Great, okay. Thanks. All right, so, uh, it sounds like we're going to move that policy on to, uh, consent. Are you guys okay with that? The one that we're just looking at. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, okay, thank you. All right, uh, Trace Holloway, forty-three, forty-two, student searches.
Yes. All right, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm bringing, uh, for, uh, policy forty-three, forty-two, um, students, uh, searches with proposed changes to align with the, uh, North Carolina School Board Association. I've got, uh, four changes that, um, proposed changes that I'd like to, uh, present to you guys. I have, um, the first one, um, pretty much is just changing, um, the language from constitutional to legal, where it reads in the first paragraph, um, all school officials carrying out a search or seizure are expected to be knowledgeable about the constitutional rights. We would, it's marking out constitutional and, um, adding legal rights of students and the appropriate procedures for conducting the search and seizure. It also, um, proposed changed is where, uh, a search must be justified at its, at its inception. Um, it, it's going to add, um, some more verbiage to that to where it pretty much says it's permissible in scope and conducted using methods that are narrowly tailored to be minimally intrusive. So that, that's the first one. Um, the, the second one also, um, is a language change where it talks about the scoop, the scope of the search. Um, and it takes out, and the methods used to conduct the search must be reasonably related to the objectives of the search. And it adds, what, it, it, it actually adds what it took out. Again, uh, and the methods used to conduct the search must be narrowly tailored to be minimally, uh, intrusive in light of the age and sex of a student. The third one talks about what can be searched, um, on the student. Um, school, school officials may search a student's desk, locker, or personal effects, um, including but not limited to, uh, purses, book bags, and it takes out ou, outer clothing. Um, and it adds, um, for example, coats or jackets. It just takes out the outer part and adds coats or jackets not currently being worn by the student.
Um, excuse me.
Sure.
I'm wondering if we can just jump to where we might have questions?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
And I have a question right there, so.
Okay.
Um, I wonder, that change to take out outerwear is, is a question for me? Like, I just wonder why we made that change?
I think I can speak to that. I think that they were, um, because if you look down at number three, it addresses pat-down searches of a student's person. And so my assumption was that they were thinking, well, if it's clothing the student is wearing, then it's a pat-down search addressed under number three. Whereas if it's their coat in their locker, then it's addressed under number one.
Uh, so in the way that it's worded in the revised version, could they then like search underwear?
Only if it's not being worn.
Oh, that's not clear to me. That's, to me, outer clothing is so much clearer.
Because it, because they added. What if we, so if you see it says clothing, for example, coats or jackets not currently being worn, would it help to move not currently being worn before the parentheses?
Yes, yep. I agree that I was going to, um, sometimes where they place the parentheses is a little. It's hard to stick it right in the middle. I mean, do we even need coats and jacket? Because also I don't take this to assume we could require a student to remove an article of clothing either, right?
No, I guess the example may be helpful to an administrator who's moving fast to, you know, that like what we're talking about is, you know, the pocket of their coat that's hung over their chair. Not, um, but I've never been an administrator, so those would be the.
Now, this is, it's clear to me, and I, I do like the part, I don't think coat is necessary. And I do think, you know, whichever is the word. If we just take out the parentheses. School officials may search a student's desk, locker, and personal effects, including but not limited to purses, book bags, and clothing not currently being worn by the student. Mr. Holloway, do you see where they're referring to, where, where we can just strike that when we bring it to the full board?
I do.
Okay.
And big picture, this is, these changes were also, aside from this part, which I think is just for clarification, but the minimally intrusive language was kind of legislation that was actually part of the budget bill for whatever reason. But it, it was obviously the rule, but they have constitutionally, but now they've put it in state statute.
Right. Okay. So, do you want to ask any questions? Because I was going to ask a question about this one too.
I do, but go ahead, Mr. Ebs.
No, 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 mine was, um, no, go ahead, go ahead. You're fine. You're fine, I'm sure.
Oh, well, mine's about a different topic, so, I mean, within this same policy, but if yours is about this part, then go.
Okay, well, I was just wondering, this policy is one that when I first, um, got to this district, we were trying to use quite a bit because, um, there were searches that we were doing, um, for students that were showing up to the prom. Um, for, you know, just that they bought any kind of paraphernalia with them to the prom. But I want to be clear that really that is not allowable with the way this policy reads, and so.
So that would fall under be suspicionless searches? So you've got two kinds of searches. You got, I'm searching you because I think I heard that you have a vape, or there's suspicionless searches. So like having a metal detector at prom is a suspicionless search. Everyone gets searched. Um, so right now, it does say that to maintain a safe, drug-free, weapon-free environment, school officials may conduct general suspicionless searches. Um, as long as you're not singling out individuals, um.
Like you could do like every.
Then you are supposed to provide notice to students and their parents in advance that that is going to happen.
Okay.
That, you know, you will be searched upon entrance to prom.
So I just wanted, that's like a place where we use this policy or have, I've seen us use it, so. Okay. Ms. Peters, did you have something?
Oh, yeah, so, um, this is in A, uh, the, and it's not a change, it's an old, um, thank you, by the way, Mr. Holloway. It's, it's, so it's not in red. But, um, the paragraph that says reasonable suspicion is not required if a student freely and voluntarily consents to the search of his or her person or possessions. I just, I don't, I don't think a student can freely and voluntarily consent in a school setting where the, where you can be penalized. I mean, it's, it's a violation of the code of conduct if you don't, I think, comply with a requested search. So to me, and I, I, I don't know that others will agree with this, but I, I just, I feel like if we're going to allow consent searches, they should be like consent in writing or consent in writing with a parent or guardian present or something like that. Um, I just think it's too easy to, to, for a person in authority to get the kid to like consent.
Yeah, I got that. It'd be very difficult to really feel like it was free and voluntary.
I mean, the reasonable suspicion standard is so low. It's so easy to meet. I don't know why we need really this consent.
Isn't that the, the lawsuit we had before that went to the Supreme Court? Wasn't it about that? Where they had, do, do you know that one, Eva?
It was about, um, interrogation, but yeah, I mean, it sort of tou, touches on that, some of those themes. Like, can you, what can a kid do?
When are they in custody? Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I just think this is not real, like.
I think it would probably be helpful at least if we maintained language about, um, if the parent or guardian consents, um.
I'd be fine with that. Like, if it's, if it's student freely and voluntarily.
Because that, that does, you know, particularly with searching cars and so forth, that can be helpful.
Barb, where are you?
Oh, sorry. It's A, it's in A, the second paragraph. So there's nothing in red, right before searches of personal.
So it's in section A? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Yeah, so. So how would you change that language?
Eva, what did you say? I, I think I.
I think I would say reasonable suspicion is not required if a minor student's parent slash guardian consents.
Okay.
To the, well, then leave the rest of it, or?
Yeah, to the search, yeah.
So reasonable suspension, suspicion is not needed if a parent implies with the search?
If a parent consents. If the parent says, yes, look in his car.
So does that mean that the school needs to get consent prior to?
Not if they have reasonable suspicion. And so reasonable suspicion, I got a tip that Brandy has a vape. Okay, I have a source. That's reasonable suspicion. I don't need parent consent.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I mean, yeah, I want to make sure we weren't putting up too many roadblocks to being able to add quickly. Okay.
I think if you have a real circumstance, you're not going to ask for consent. You're just going to do it.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
And I just was trying to make sure that didn't, I see what you're saying there. I got it.
But I like that, what Eva said. My, that, so my only other thing with this policy is the part about, um, and I don't exactly know what I think we should do, but I just wanted to raise it. The new language about the person doing the searching has to be the same sex as a student with an adult witness of the same sex. And I remember when the General Assembly did this, and it just felt like them, you know, this was sort of part of the whole Parents' Bill of Rights thing and like sex and gender and like it, it, it has always seemed to me that a kid should not, like, if for whatever reason, a boy would rather not be searched by a man. I, I don't know why. It's just a weird requirement to me. So I just wanted to flag it and see what people thought. And I also just think they're, they're like trolling. It's like gender sex thing is just a sort of.
I think in some ways it kind of helps the adults, though. You know, it's, it's a protection for them, to be honest with you. And, and.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking from my perspective, I mean, I'd probably not want a male identifying person to search my daughter.
Typically, I mean, Mr. Holloway, you can speak to this, but we've asked in terms of best practice for them to typically have both there, like two adults.
Yes, at all times, yes.
I guess, I just think the way this is written. I guess, I just think the way this is written, like, if you have a trans girl who's doing the search.
Yeah.
That's, I think, like, let's say we agree, that should be, um, the same, whatever, then I feel like we need to have our own language to, to make clear that we don't think a trans girl has to be searched by a man.
Um, I was just gonna say, just from an administrator's standpoint, and I think that, um, Tracy can speak to this in terms of how it has probably played out in our schools, but previously in my administrative experience, the searches have taken place with the administrator who was handling the office referral and then whoever's the SRO. Uh, they've actually been present, um, during that time if there was some suspicion of some type of illegal activity. And so I don't necessarily know that in some cases that it truly follows kind of that whole gender preference thing in the past, but I would ask Mr. Holloway to kind of speak to that in terms of our district.
Yeah, um, it, it's, it's pretty much what you said. Uh, we, we just have two administrators there at, at all times. Um, now, that they will, if, if there is a, like, um, Ms. Dossie said, I mean, if there, if there is a, a female that's going to be searched, um, typically they do, uh, try to have a female present as well. Um, so, um, we, we do work to try to have, um, honestly, the, the, the same sex, um, in, involved, um, in that search, um, whether they're in the room or not, or not. I mean, I mean, whether they're in the search or not, they're in the room. We have...
Based on this new law, if, if you're searching their physical body, it's two adults and both of them have to be the same sex as the student.
Right.
Um, so going forward, that will be the rule. Unless you're using, as it says, like, if you have a metal detector wand or something and you're not touching them. Um, I don't have a great response. I mean, I think Barb's point is a valid one. I think we're in a... I mean, first of all, I think it doesn't define sex. Um, which I suppose would leave room for you to define it in the moment, um, for better or for worse.
Yeah, unless we wanna say something like assigned sex or, but, you know, or not...
Yeah, I was thinking...
Sorry, go ahead, Ronnie.
I was just trying to think about a solution too, Barb, and I was, first it was like how they identify, but then kids can just be goofy in the moment and who, you know, it just... You start to need to do a lot of refining and definitions and, I don't know, it's tricky.
Or maybe, Eva, your point about it's broad enough that it would just cover, you know?
This particular statute and policy do not define sex as sex assigned at birth.
Maybe we should leave it alone then.
Probably for the present.
Mm-hmm.
Probably against this.
Okay.
Other questions or comments about this? I'm sort of feeling like this should go to discussion and action rather than consent. I don't know. What are your thoughts on that?
Because of the, the sex gender part, or?
No, well, uh, more about the, there's a, there's a tangible change that we have to have two officials that have to be the same sex as a student, and that's new. Um, I, so I guess I, I just wanna draw a little more attention to that, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna have a discussion. I don't know. I, I, I can go either way on it.
Trying to look back and I'm trying to move fast, but when was the last, I feel like we've had this policy. I'm trying to figure out the last time we bought it, because sometimes that helps to determine.
That's twenty fifteen.
Okay, I, I mean, maybe then we do, just because it's been a while.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, worst thing, we put it on there and nobody has any discussion. It's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, let's do that. Okay, we are getting, we're getting close to time, but we've got only two left. Might be okay. Alright, so we're moving on to sixty-two twenty, which is school nutrition services. Dr. Stewart?
Good evening, board members, uh, staff. I bring the for you policy sixty-two twenty tonight, uh, with food, uh, child nutrition. Um, just a few changes here from the, uh, School Board Association. Uh, the first is under operational standards, number one. Uh, it in updating language to ensure that we have the appropriate groups included in the section and is, uh, protecting them against discrimination. Uh, it also includes language prohibiting school officials to retaliate against anyone who participated in prior, uh, civil rights activity. Under number fourteen, um, it includes language to prevent any administrative penalties towards students for unpaid meals, uh, and it has some specific examples there. And the file, the final, um, change is in the reference section where the USDA, uh, guidance website is actually included.
Okay. Board members, any comments or questions?
Alright, and are we, we're alright to put this on consent?
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Alright, let's try to see. Yeah, it looks like we're going off.
And Justin is here for Jonathan tonight.
Yeah, right, okay, alright. So sixty-four oh one, ethics and the purchasing function, Justin? Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm bringing a policy sixty-four oh one, ethics in the purchasing function. Uh, it's got some minor formatting updates, but the main change is included down in section B, training. This was driven by a law change included in the budget, the state budget that was most recently passed. Um, basically requires anybody involved in administering contracts to receive, uh, conflict of interest training.
Yeah.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah. I'm surprised that wasn't true in the past. Okay, questions, comments, clearly?
There was, there is a paragraph up at the top. It's the second paragraph of the policy.
Yeah.
Um, it starts with conflict of interest involving board members, um...
Right.
Jonathan, Brandy, and I kind of felt this was redundant. The standards of conduct section really defines what conflict of interest is, so I don't, we felt it wasn't really necessary. Um, it is all strict language is not included in the, uh, NCPSA or NCSBA, uh, recommendations, so.
Right.
Let it up to the committee if they wanna strike it or leave it in. It's got some weird language in it that is, is not totally clear.
That language under B, Justin, is that what you're referring to?
Uh, it's up at sort of the top of the policy, it's the second paragraph.
On the markup, it's in like yellow, or, you know, yellow highlight.
Hmm, I don't know if I'm looking at the right version.
You have to scroll down to the bottom of the abstract, Ronnie.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, okay. It's, it's in red at the bottom of the abstract. Oh, no, it's just, it's not in the policy, it's just in the abstract.
Correct.
Right, and it should be near the top, actually.
Yeah, it is, and it's highlighted in yellow.
Mm-hmm.
Second paragraph for the whole, it looks like the entire policy is copied at the bottom of the abstract, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you see it?
Ronnie, have you found it? Do you know where we're talking?
Yeah, we have a conflict of interest policy.
We do.
I don't think we do.
Yeah. And also, since we're requiring everyone to be trained on it, I'm not sure that needs to be defined here as well.
That was my exact point.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, I'm finding, thank you, Justin. I'm finally striking it. I don't know, others?
Yep, I'm good.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Eva?
So we need it.
I keep making points, but they're not really points. This is training that the board needs to go to as well? Is that correct? This new training? The...
Already a part of what we...
Conflict of interest?
It's already a part of our ethics training.
Oh, okay, okay. Eva's...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Alright.
But, so, right, I, it's for any staff involved in administering contracts, and the good news is we have made a video which is included in your services from our firm, um, and I'm going to send a link to them um, today, so you can use that video for the training.
Okay. Alright, great. Um, do we need to mark out that, delete the paragraph with a green mark out?
We do, yes.
Okay, alright. Okay, great, thanks, Justin. Okay, I think that's good. Everybody, we're good to move on?
Yes, look at us.
On consent? I know, right? Well, now we're gonna just watch what happens, Brandy, with your teleworking. Okay, seventy-five oh three, teleworking, hopefully the last one.
Yeah, I mean, so with this one, this particular policy, and I am with Ronnie, I will not read everything, but ultimately the reason why they have added information about the Pregnant Workers' Fairness Act is just to show that they can access these accommodations, not just under the American Disabilities Act, but also under, uh, the Pregnant Workers' Fairness Act, so it just added that language, so. Any questions about this or things that we should think about?
I don't have any, it seems pretty straightforward. Hey, guys, anyone? No, I think we're good. Okay?
Alright.
So with that, on consent also, um, Brandy, did you wanna talk about that FYI thing at the bottom?
Absolutely, yes. So, at the bottom of the agenda, sometimes I will put FYIs, and so when we are going through our policy review, we found that there are two policies for, um, uh, what policy was that? Policies seventy-six fifty and then eighty-six twenty. The policy name is employee traveling and, um, expense reimbursement. And so, they, they were just both sitting out there. We're going to dissolve, um, the simple, the, the policy seventy-six fifty because it is the same thing as what sits in seventy-six fifty and eighty-six twenty. And so we'll just have one policy, uh, for seventy-six fifty, which is expense reimbursement. So just as we're, um, doing the policy review, we're finding where we have duplicated information, and so we'll bring that information to you. It doesn't, um, necessarily, uh, require us to go to the board because it's technical and conforming changes, but we do wanna bring them here just as FYI.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. Alright, I think that was it for this evening, and we're at six fifty-seven. Good job, everybody. Alright, thanks, everyone, for your participation tonight, I appreciate it. Um, I think we're done.
Alright, thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye, y'all.